Call to order this meeting of the Assembly Budget and Finance Committee of the whole. It is Thursday, December 17th, and we are notice from 11:10 to 12:10 PM. I am Suzanne LaFrance, and the Chair of this committee. It is our Vice Chair is Assembly Member Perez Verdia, and we will go ahead and start with introductions. Ms. Camacho, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Allard.
Here.
Mr. Constant.
Here.
Mr. Dunbar.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Ms. LaFrance.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Perez Verdia. Mr. Rivera.
Present.
Mr. Weddleton. And Ms. Salatell. You have a quorum.
Great, thank you, Ms. Camacho. And before we begin, I did want to say thank you to Ms. Camacho for all your support. I think you might be the most organized person I've ever met. And thank you for your work to ensure that our meetings run smoothly and the materials get posted. Very much appreciate all your help. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining. The documents are available online. If you go to muni.org, click on Assembly, and the Committees link is on the left. Click on Committees and then scroll down to the Budget and Finance Committee of the Whole page, and you will see the agenda posted there as well as some other documents concerning the Revenue Status Report. We've got, it's a mostly standard agenda. I'm gonna make one change if no one objects, and that's to start with the update on the pay audits by Ms. Marshall. This will be a very quick update, and then she can go ahead and get back to her other work. So does anybody object to changing the order? Okay, we will go ahead and take up E., Update on Pay Audits. Ms. Marshall?
Hi, thank you. Okay, so once again, just to kind of review why we do payroll audits right now, and the goal is to review all payroll corrections submitted since we went live with SAP, which was 9/11/2017. And the goal is to double-check all the payroll corrections that were completed. And then we want to make sure that we want to provide employees and unions with the complete audit per person. This, from the last time we met, we have done 12 new audits. It was kind of, we had some staff turnover, so we have an employee who resigned and took a CPA job, so it was a good thing for him. So we've had a little turnover in the department, so we hope to be fully staffed and up with more audits starting first week of January. Our next audit batch, we plan to be the APD, Payroll Corrections. And we continue to work closely with legal, the Legal Department and Labor Department, and they're the ones that work closely with the unions on these audits. Trying to think of what else we did talk about, some high level. I wanted to kind of give you some audit results. So as we do the audits, the audits then are sent through the union to the employee, and then the employee, and then there's a big review process that happens, so it takes a while to get all the results. But we are averaging about 30% rate where we have located an error in our payroll correction that we did, you know, years ago. And we are correcting those errors as soon as they are discovered. So just letting you know, that's where we are. And it's very minimum, minimal. And once again, we are per pay period, so SAP is running, running well, and it's not creating more errors during a payroll cycle, and we're averaging about 22 pay corrections per pay set cycle. And before we went to SAP, we were averaging 50 per pay cycle, so we are down, and SAP is working. It is working, yay, and we're proceeding. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Let me just note for the record that we were joined by Mr. Weddleton at 11:14. Do you members have any questions for Ms. Marshall?
You know, Suzy, since you're here, this is Mr. Constant, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Constant.
You know, this isn't part of the Budget and Finance, but why don't you, since there's a number of us here, give us a 30-second spiel on protecting ourselves from hacking and whatnot.
Oh, from hacking, sorry.
Yeah, I know, it's a little bit shift of topic, but since you're here and we're here.
Right. So, a lot of bad actors try to, to get people to look on links and download things and through using email. Email is still the...
You've become really quiet. There you go.
We, we can't hear you.
Better now? Is that better?
Still faint.
Okay. Is that any better? If I talk like that, we're good?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, from the FBI, what they have told us over and over is that the, the primary way the bad guys get into our network, or anybody's network and do bad things, is via email. And there's, so it's really important that everybody pay attention to when they get an email. Is it an expected email? If it has an attachment, is it an expected email with an expected attachment? And the other side is to just hover over the link and see if it looks like it's from the source that sent it to you. So if it's from, let's say, Office Max or whatever, if it's, if it's an attachment that actually has the link to the document, or the attachment has like Office Max and the URL, then you're probably good. But it really is an email awareness of, am I supposed to get this? Am I expecting this? This looks weird. I've never heard of that person before. The, the way to just be safe is to not click it, and you can forward it to me, and we'll make sure my team reviews it. So I know that's probably a tough thing to kind of get in, but it's a good practice. And the other thing that we're gonna do, we just agreed on some, some language, but we're gonna make sure that we put a little alert on every email when they come from external sources now. There'll be a little note at the top of an email that says like, "external email," so that at least you're a little aware that, okay, wait, this didn't come from, you know, from muni.org, it came from some external. So at least you have some, a little extra flag. We're trying to do our part there to help everybody. But, and if you think, if you see of something unusual happening, you can, you can send me an email, you could call me, and we'll have our cyber team on it as soon as possible. That answer your question? Give you enough information?
That's good.
That's good.
There's some pressure.
Pressure, my contact.
Thank you, Mr. Constant, and thank you, Ms. Marshall, for the update and the information. I did want to ask members of the committee if this is an item that we want to maybe go to a quarterly update on or remove. I know, Mr. Slivka and Ms. Marshall, we were discussing that. Does anyone have any comments as to whether or not to remove this item from the regular
I guess I'll chime in here. I, I think I was the one, I think there were a couple of us, but I was the, either the Budget Chair or the Chair at the time when we pushed for these monthly updates. I think that we're probably to the point where I would support going to quarterly, although I would ask for, you know, we, we got, we used to get graphs, and, and I think a graph or two would probably be helpful if we can do that quarterly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunbar. So quarterly with a graph would be your preference?
Yeah, and if the graph is super boring and shows that we've got this large and sustainable decrease in number of pay audits, that's excellent.
Okay, thanks for the suggestion. Does anyone else want to chime in? And please, put yourself in the queue or text me at 907-351-7199, or the chat, not the queue. Okay, I don't see anybody, so we may end up going to a quarterly update on that unless, of course, something happens in between that we need an update on. Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and move on to the report from the Budget Advisory Commission, and I believe we have Alyssa Rodriguez, the Chair, on. Ms. Rodriguez, are you here?
I am, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Great. Yep.
Excellent.
The floor is yours.
Excellent, thank you. So just a quick update, the last time that we, the Budget Advisory Commission, met, we reviewed the ASD's preliminary FY22 budget. We had a lot of questions from Mr. Ratliff and Anderson, and they, they did a great job in helping us to understand, one of the main things was the cost of COVID on the ASD. And so we had a lot of questions about, you know, oh, well, if students aren't in the classroom, don't we have a lot of savings there? And, and they really helped us to understand what was going on behind the scenes that we might not know about that resulted either in some increased cost or, you know, not the cost savings that we had expected. We're gonna hear more about the ASD budget on the 7th. And one question that I had for the Assembly, that we can either, you know, take an answer for now or when I'm done in just a moment, is whether there's anything in particular the Assembly would like for us to focus on in our review of the ASD 2020, or, sorry, 2022 budget. So I'd love to pause, and if anybody has any comments there on specific things you'd like for us to focus on, we would, we would greatly like to know.
Do you members have any recommendations or ideas you want to share? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody in the chat, so maybe this is something we can come back to.
Absolutely. So the only small other items that we have is, we started to have an open discussion at our Budget Advisory Commission meeting on our 2021 strategic plan. We typically have a day-long strategic planning session, and we're not going to do that this year, as we had in years past, just because of COVID. We're instead doing a series of conversations about what we liked from the past year and what we wished we had done differently. So that's another thing that we're gonna continue that discussion on our January 7th meeting, and, and that's all I have for now. So thank you very much for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, for being here and for all the work that you and the other members of the Budget Advisory Commission do. We really appreciate your feedback, and I know you've spent a lot of time digging into the budget and appreciate your attention on the ASD budget. Does anyone have any questions or, or comments or feedback? Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, thanks, Alyssa, for joining us today. So I think from my perspective, it would be helpful, particularly as school board members in the districts continue highlighting the multimillion-dollar deficit, just to get a sense of what impacts or what the budget projects to happen. I think the sooner that we can understand those, the better we are gonna be in a position to collaborate and work with the school district as well as with our legislature so that they can understand what cuts to the school district would look like.
For the Chair, thank you very much, Felix. I, I will definitely look into that and try and get a better understanding so that we can be of more use to the Assembly in trying to communicate that. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Anybody else? Okay, I don't see anyone else in the chat. Thanks so much, Alyssa, appreciate you being here. Okay, we will go ahead and move on to B., CARES Act Funding, Coronavirus Relief Fund. Do we have someone from the administration who would like to give an update?
Chair LaFrance, this is Alex Slivka. I will provide the update on this topic. Briefly, we have received from the State of Alaska the entire $156 million and change. We have a plan in place to have that all spent and/or moved to first responder payroll by the end of the year. I would thank the Assembly for their action on December 9th redirecting 15 million funds that were not needed for their initial purpose to community support. And also point out that on the 22nd, there is another item on the agenda to move 10.7 million worth of community programs from CARES grant to general fund so that we can make sure that those funds are expended since it's unlikely, are expended for community benefit, because it's unlikely that we would get that done by the end of the year. The net of all of those actions is that roughly of the 156 million, 123 million will go toward programs that directly benefit the community. Sorry, my math is bad, 133 million. And then 23 million is going to be used to make sure that we end the year with as near a balanced budget as we can. And other than that, I will stop there and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slivka. Anybody have any questions? Okay, I don't see anyone in the chat. Thank you for that update. All right, we will go ahead then and move on to the next item on the agenda. Update on the 2020 budget. Mr. Wilbur, OMB Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the 2020 budget, I'll remind the Assembly that we provided a third quarter 2020 report at your December 8th meeting, and at the end of September, we were 75% through the year, but the total amount of the budget spent was roughly 66%. Most of the under expenditures are coming from our non-labor side. Our labor budget is being spent pretty much right on track. So if you had a chance to look at that or want to get, refamiliarize yourself, please let me know. I will, want to just remind the Assembly, there's, as we get into October, November, and December, we're gonna see some changes that are gonna be affected by some of the things that Mr. Slivka just mentioned. As we move that first responder payroll budget out of, from the CARES funds, from the operating budget, you'll see some significant changes in the, the dollar numbers, but obviously not so much into the service. So as you see those things and you have questions, please reach out to me and I will help you address those. Also, as Mr. Slivka mentioned, as we're moving the COVID-19, the pandemic relief funds into the, into the fund balance and then reallocating those to the programs, primarily Mr. Shutey's office over at Health, Parks, and a little bit in real estate, you'll see some changes in the last quarter. I just want to make the Assembly aware of, of those things. Obviously, the sale of MLMP at the end of October, the September report didn't include all of the latest information. So as the month of October comes to a close, you will see some, some changes primarily related to MLMP in their, in their review. And then the last part I mentioned, you know, this year, we had a lot of departments that were not able to take, employees were not able to take leave for one way, one reason or another. And while we budget an average amount of leave cash-in, this year, we do expect more leave cash-in that was initially budgeted. So as we close the year, I think for the most departments will be very, very close. We have a couple departments, because they have a cap on the amount of leave they can keep on the books, that's primarily related to Fire Department. We'll see a, a larger amount than budgeted of leave cash, leave cash-in from the Fire Department. So I think that's a, just an important recognition as we come to the year-end. And again, if you have any questions when you get a chance to look at it, let me know. And then our, our office is working with Alex's team on closing October, and then as that comes to close, I think it's very, very close. And then November will be closing pretty soon, we have to run some internal service costs. So we'll have those reports hopefully you, to you in your January meetings. So that's what's going on, on the 2020 budget, Madam Chair, and I, I have a couple of things I'd like to talk about 21, but I'll pause if there's questions from Assembly members at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. We do have a question from Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Wilbur, you mentioned that there might be a, or you expect there to be, a large cash payout for leave, and can you give us a ballpark figure on that at this point? Thanks.
I, I, I think the Fire Department will probably be at least about a half a million dollars more than they had budgeted. I can, I will go back and look at the, the total amount for all of those, and I will get you a closer number. The reality is, I won't know the exact amount until after the year-end, because there are some folks right now that are taking leave that will move that piece down. So I'm really not 100% sure, but I know that the Fire Department will be, they will have more than they are budgeted. But Assembly Member Kennedy, if you can give me an opportunity to get you a better number, let me do that, and I will give you a better forecast.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wilbur. No, that's good at this point. I mean, I know you'll have the final numbers at some point, but I was just wondering if we were talking about the mil, into the millions at this point, or, again, just a ballpark, and you gave that, so I appreciate that answer for now. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. We've got another question for you, Mr. Wilbur. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, Alex, are, are we not allowed to use CARES Act funding for that, to cover the Fire Department overtime?
We are allowed through the Chair to use CARES Act funding for overtime, but we are not allowed to use CARES Act funding for leave, and what Mr. Wilbur is talking about is leave, which is not reimbursable.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I'll check. I don't believe that we can use CARES Act funding for leave either, but I will, I will confirm that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Do any other members have questions at this point? I don't see anyone in the chat. So, Mr. Wilbur, if you want to continue, I know you mentioned you have some information about the 2021 budget, and was there anything else regarding impacts of COVID-19 on the budget? I think we've covered a lot of it, but just wanted to check if there was anything else before we move on to 2021.
I have nothing to add, Madam Chair.
Okay, thanks. If you want to go ahead and continue?
Sure, thank you. So for 2021, there's a couple of things I want to bring to the Assembly's attention as we will be in a gap here for about two, about three weeks. The administration is working on preparing the 21 bond ballot propositions. We're working with Public Finance and our Bond Council to prepare those packages. We're gonna introduce those on the January 12th meeting, and I suspect that if the Assembly's interested in a work session, once you receive those, we'll look forward to that invitation if you're so inclined. I will note that there's a couple of changes that, that we are aware of, that the administration is considering. One of them, Assembly Member LaFrance and Mr. Weddleton are in your district. We received some information from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors that they would not like to bring the Glacier City Hall Little Bears on the 21 bond. So the administration's considered that. I think we are gonna honor that request. However, they've also requested that the administration consider putting a rescue truck on the bond for the Girdwood service area. The, the primary piece of equipment is in the Fire Department in Girdwood that plays a big role in responding to accidents and emergency management services along Turnigan Arms. So we're looking at whether or not we want to consider that one as part of our package. That is not a project that the Assembly had seen earlier, and it was not in the approved capital improvement program. So the administration supports that, and the Assembly supports that, then we, that will go forward on it as a ballot measure on the area-wide public safety bond, and then we would have to amend the capital improvement program. I think the Fire Department, Chief Weston and Chief Hetrick made a pretty solid case, and we've had some conversations. So that is there. We're also had some effort to look at the public restrooms on the operating cost and the cost of what we could deliver for that project. We'll have some updated information on that one. And then the last piece is, last year, the administration...
Actually...
Yep.
Mr. Wilbur, if I could just stop you for a moment, because we have three people in the queue.
Sure.
So before you move on, maybe we will take those questions. First, I have Mr. Constant, and then Mr. Gates, and then Mr. Weddleton. So, Mr. Constant?
Thanks, Lance. A couple of times over the last two weeks, or since the last meeting, folks have been in discussions, I've been with, about potentially making some slight changes to the proposed bonds. What are the parameters around that for Tuesday? Or for next month? For next month?
Yeah, excellent, through the Chair. Thank you, Mr. Constant. So the Assembly has the ability to make adjustments to the ballot propositions, but if you are gonna do that, we will also ask you to make adjustments to the capital improvement program. Obviously, our process would, we bring forward a capital improvement program based on a lot of review and analysis, conversations with you and the public. However, when the capital program gets approved, in the case of the Girdwood one, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors just didn't, in their schedule, were not allowed to make us aware when we submitted and the Assembly approved, that they didn't want to do that capital program in Girdwood, and they wanted to do something different. So the two approaches are, we could basically say, no, thank you, the Assembly's already approved the capital budget, and there's no, no room for adjustments, but in reality, there is a little bit of a room. So the Assembly does have the ability to consider those changes. In the past, the Assembly has had a project on the capital improvement program. They've approved it. However, they made some comments on the scope of the work, and so they've modified the total amount of that. And then most recently, as last year, you may remember, that the Assembly approved a capital program, a capital improvement. And then as we were preparing the bonds, we found out that in December, the culverts under Northern Lights Boulevard collapsed. So we went back and looked at that proposal, the capital improvement program. We brought forward to you a revised CIB for 2020 with a revised proposed bonds. The Assembly heard that in a work session, and then those adjustments were made, and went to the voters, and they approved it. So what we're considering is not out of the norm.
Yeah, I'm not so concerned about what you're considering, I just know that there are others considering, like other things, and I want to make sure if we're gonna invest the time and...
If folks could please mute.
But thank you, I think you got to what I needed, Lance, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Constant.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Thank you, Mr. Constant. We do have Mr. Gates in the queue, Mr. Weddleton has unqueued himself, so we'll go to Mr. Gates, if you don't mind, before we move on.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I actually was gonna bring up the same sort of topic that Mr. Constant and Mr. Wilbur just discussed, and I mean, like Mr. Wilbur said, it's a little out of the norm to go through that process for amendment amendments in January to the bond proposal and then the capital improvement program. And, you know, I got to tip my hat to Mr. Wilbur last year, I recall, that he recognized we need to amend the capital improvement budget or program as well, and got that in. But I mostly speaking up to ask that if the members see something that they think is needed and they haven't heard of being considered in the bond packages, to talk to Mr. Wilbur and whoever else, the relevant departments, this is possible, rather than maybe until the ordinances are introduced January 12th and do it by amendment, because there's a whole bunch of pieces that need to be considered, and we have to go to Bond Council legally to look at it. And doing that by floor amendment from between January 12th to the 26th meeting is a little... And doing that by floor amendment from between January 12th to the 26th meeting is a little bit. I'm searching for a good term. It's a little crazy to do it that way for us. We need to work on it. So talk to people now if you need something in the program or on the bond packages. Rather than after January 12th. Thank you. And then, Mr. Wilbur, I was going to ask to explain the best process to get Assembly members' requests in, but I think he just did that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gates. Appreciate the suggestions that members work with the administration and Mr. Wilbur in particular on any changes. Okay, back to you, Mr. Wilbur.
And the last two items, very quickly, still related to the bonds. One of the other things that we are also considering is last year, the administration considered putting some money on the APD bond for their fleet. Their fleet is about 60 to 65% in a depreciation situation, depreciated. And so we've talked to the mayor, talked to the fleet folks, and we're considering presenting another bond next year for APD fleet vehicles. So again, those will probably be some changes that you were not aware of when we approved it. And, and it's based on some new information that we've got from Maintenance and Operations and from the chief. So we'll keep you apprised. I just want to give you an early heads up that that's coming. And the last item I have is OMB will have a first quarter budget schedule out, probably the first week of January. So we'll have that available for your next meeting. As I get confirmation from the administration as to the timing and the dates, I'll also be working with Desiree on the meeting dates for the Assembly for that process. So we'll get that out before your next meeting. So look forward to that as well. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Anybody have any questions from Mr. Wilbur? Okay, I don't see anyone in the chat. So we'll go ahead and move on to D, MOA Financial Status. Mr. Slupka?
Thank you, Chair LaFrance. I'm going to turn this over to the Treasurer, Dan Moore, to talk about the monthly revenue. And then when he's done, I am going to talk a little bit about our spending pattern relative to our response to the COVID-19. So Dan, take it away.
Okay, thanks, Alex. And thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm posted to the website today. Desiree helped us do that. So thank you to her. Is a PowerPoint presentation. And I definitely will not be going through every slide here. There's just not time. It's almost 29, 30 pages, I guess. But this particular presentation is one that we're going to give to the Internal Executive Group later today at four o'clock. And since we already had it prepared and since we're not going to be able to give you any report in writing until January 12th, which is your next meeting, that, you know, in terms of the submittal time deadlines, we thought we'd go ahead and share just a few highlights from this, this report. But this report, this is a PowerPoint. It's a summary, but it does give you a lot of details in terms of what are the major variances, either plus or minus, and included in this are some graphs that show you some trend lines. So I'm going to just highlight probably three or four particular revenues. And then, you know, if there's questions, I can attempt to answer those on the fly. So overall, and this would be on slide number two of this document, we're currently projecting $22.2 million of a negative variance, negative revenue variance for general government. And if you were to compare that to the document that we provided to the Assembly at your December 8th meeting, that's about a $1.2 million improvement. And that prime, for the primary reason for that improvement is in investment earnings and we'll talk about that in just one second. So that, that would explain probably 90, 95% of that improvement. But anyway, that's the overall. Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry to interrupt. Would you be able to share your screen?
If I can figure that out. Hang on, hang on just a moment. Let's see if I've got it. I think I've got it. Did that do it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Oh, let's see. This is actually, this is the older one. I'm sorry. Let me get back into it. Sorry. Hang on just a moment here. Get back in here. Stop sharing that screen. I'll try one more time here. There, I think this is it. Nope, sorry. I apologize. Okay, there, I see it now. I think this is it. Okay, there we go. Is, you all see that?
Yes, thank you so much.
Good. Okay, thank you. All right. So I, I should have done that to begin with. I apologize. So this is the page I was just referring to. That's the $22 million negative revenue variance and it's $1.2 million improvement since, since the last report we provided to the Assembly. I'm going to go to the next page here. These are the very largest areas of revenue that we look at and we consider them, you know, major in dollars and just major in terms of the movement, especially the movement that's occurred in 2020 with COVID. So what I mentioned a moment ago is the $1.2 million positive improvement since the last report you were given is pretty much due to investment earnings. And you can see on the top line here that that improved since the last report by $977,000, which is, you know, a sizable amount of money. That particular revenue type is one that can definitely swing month to month quite significantly. I guess what I would say, we only have, you know, we have December, but I, there's a little bit of a lag time here even in this number. So let's just say we had two months of actual data still to, to realize in our number for investment earnings. I think the one thing hopefully that will help this number maybe stay a little bit more stable is that the Federal Reserve recently announced that they, they plan to keep their near zero rate, short-term rates for the next three years. And, and what I read up, Public Finance gave us some explanation here, but the yield curve has steepened. And what's happened is that's allowed some price, the prices of what we hold to go up a little bit. And, and so if there's some stability in the expectation of, of earnings on fixed income investments, that may help us end the year a little bit more stable with a little less swing in volatility. So we'll kind of cross our fingers for that. But that, this is always one that we cannot accurately predict how it may end up at the end of the year. The next line item on here is room tax. And I just want to make sure the Assembly is aware, this is room tax only as it affects the general government budget. And so the overall negative variance is $7.9 million. Room tax and rental vehicle tax, those are the two, you know, lines two and three. Those ones were the two revenues that were the largest in terms of dollar magnitude that were hit the hardest by COVID. And that was due to lack of tourists and business travelers. The room tax itself actually improved $110,000 from our last estimate. And the reason is because we, we did get some preliminary data on how October came in. Room tax is a quarterly tax, but the larger hotels actually report to us monthly in terms of how things are going. And we had assumed a 60% decline would occur in the fourth quarter of this year. And based on October, it's tracking at a 55% decline. So it's just slightly better, slightly less worse for the fourth quarter so far. And fourth quarter in, you know, historical terms is, is a pretty small quarter for revenue. So we think that one is probably a pretty decent projection. The other ones listed here, I'm not going to particularly highlight them. I will say that marijuana tax, because that has had some questions in the past. We actually, the last couple of months of data have, have slowed down. And so that the overall growth rate for the year is more in line with what we had expected. Overall, again, I believe due to COVID, marijuana sales are up. So it's the po, there's a positive variance of $900,000, but we do not expect that growth rate that we saw earlier in the year to continue in the fourth quarter. It's pretty much hit a plateau. The other two I'll mention here is motor fuel tax. That's a slightly worse. It's $130,000 worse. We have a very talented revenue analyst that works in Treasury that does a lot of research to help us understand these numbers. And one thing that was quite interesting about fuel tax is he bases his projection on what the Energy Agency at the federal level projects for fuel consumption nationwide. And that, that projection about a month ago was a 10% decline for the year. Actually, it was an 8% decline for the year. And the, the Energy Agency increased that to a 10% decline for the year. No, no doubt because COVID numbers have come up. But for Anchorage, in terms of how Anchorage is tracking rate versus national fuel consumption, we're at about 12% decline. So we're actually using even less fuel than, than the others are nationwide. So that's, that's kind of the basis of that projection. And the last one to highlight here is tobacco tax. That is a significant revenue. It's, I think, 22 million or somewhere around there. Right now, everything's tracking, you know, pretty, pretty well month to month. But because of the timing of the way the major distributors purchase their inventory, some years we've had a sort of a windfall, so to speak, with revenues. It's a timing issue. And other years, it's been just the opposite. We've come up short on, on what's budgeted for revenues. And it all just depends on when they replenish their product in their warehouses. Other than that, I think those were, yep, those were the highlights I was going to provide. I think we probably will, we will be providing a written report to the Assembly at your January 12th meeting. And I believe we will probably do it again in a February meeting. But then after that, we pretty much will have as much as, as much data as we have to work with. And we pretty much have to wait two or three months for the audit, the year-end processing and the audit to, to take its course. So that's, I'll go and mention two other quick things. Thanks. Sorry, Madam Chair. On page 15, slide 15, there are some other variances that we highlight. And one of them is in Building Safety Fund. And that one in particular is a really, really good story because originally we were hundreds of thousands of dollars under the revenue budget. We were going to miss revenue budget by a lot. However, really as a direct result of the action taken by the Assembly where you did a major discount on fees, it actually increased the, the usage or the permit activity significantly. And I believe it was like 18%. Let me just double check here. But yeah, on page, yep, on page 16, the very next page. And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm floating through papers here and I should be showing you on the screen. I apologize. I keep forgetting that part. Okay, here we are. Okay, so this is the Building Safety Fund. So we are now only projecting $140,000 negative revenue variance for the year and the revenues here are 6.5 million. So that's very, very good. It is a direct result of what the Assembly approved for discounts. And if you compare January through November of 2020 to January, November of 2019, we're actually 18% higher. So it really did encourage a lot of activity in that area. So kudos to the Assembly for, for that policy decision. The last one is just to, it's on ambulance. This is EMS. I may have passed it here. Just a moment. Let's see. I'll scroll through it real fast. Ambulance is a pretty major revenue for the city. It's $9.3 million. And we are projecting $3.3 million negative variance. And that's no surprise. We, we informed the Assembly about that two or three months ago. It's a timing issue with some additional reimbursement that is, that is out there. It's just not going to happen in 2020. However, if you look at the graph here, you can see, and this is sort of what I was referring to earlier about year-end adjustments and having to wait for the Controller Division and the auditors to finish their work. You can see a really big swing that occurred toward the end of 2019. And that was directly as, as a result of some year-end adjustments that were made. So this one, even though, you know, we, we think we're going to be, you know, within that $3 million variance, it could swing even more, positive or negative, based on year-end adjustments made by the Controller Division. Okay. And I know I took a little more time than usual, but hopefully that was helpful and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And thank you for sharing that presentation with us. Just wanted to mention again that it's been posted to the webpage. Thank you, Desiree. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I don't see anybody in the chat. Mr. Moore, did you have anything else concerning revenue impacts of COVID-19? I, I know we've covered that pretty consistently and already touched on a lot of it.
Yep. I, I don't specifically, other than what I was mentioning about room and rental vehicle tax, but Alex may, may have something additional. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Slupka, you have anything you want to add?
Through the chair. The only thing I wanted to add is, is a heads up that in, you know, and if we've been paying for the COVID response through a series of emergency ordinances. And the last one that you passed was on the November 17th minute meeting, which gave total authority of $42 million. I, I do want to explain the mechanics. We've spent roughly 27 million so far, but code requires us to encumber for the length of the contract. So by the end of December, we will have, not necessarily spent, but we will have encumbered that total of 42 million. So we're working on an additional emergency ordinance to get on the addendum that will ask for probably a fairly large amount of money. Because when we started this, we were spending two to $4 million a month. Our current burn rate's about $7 million a month due to the extensive amount of testing that we're doing and the fact that we have over 600,000 people in shelters and paying for all of that. And so the way code says is it's not so much, I can't just ask you for how much I'm going to spend next month. Because we have a, a number of contracts in excess of 60 in relation to the COVID response. And, and many of those are, are going to be expiring at the end of the year and we're going to look to extend those contracts through probably June of 2021. Doesn't mean that if the emergency ends in March, that we have to keep spending that money in April, May, June. But it does mean that as we extend those contracts, we're going to have to encumber budget. And so we're going to have to ask you for a fairly large amount of money, probably something in excess of $20 million to give us the budgetary authority to be able to continue to respond to the COVID pandemic. What, but this is, what's going to happen in 2021 is we're going to start to reach a point where our CARES, our FEMA Public Assistance Reimbursement requests are going to start to come in. And so we're probably going to reach a point where the monies coming in are going to balance the monies being spent. And, and we fully expect of all the money we've spent now, 27 million and how that will grow in the coming months. We fully expect to get reimbursement from FEMA for all of that money. So I just wanted to give you that heads up that that's probably going to be on the addendum. And if you wanted to look back to the November 17th meeting to the EO 2020-08, the information we're going to put in the new EO, draft EO is probably going to be very similar to that. So it kind of gives you an idea of what we're asking for and why. And happy to answer questions about that.
Thank you, Mr. Slupka. Appreciate the heads up on that. Do you members have any questions? I am not seeing anyone in the chat. Anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Slupka?
That was it. Other than the MOA is in fine shape financially otherwise.
Great. Thank you so much for that information and the update. And I don't see anyone else in the chat. We have about nine minutes left. And we'll, we already covered the update on the pay audits by Ms. Marshall earlier, which brings us to other business. Does anyone have anything that they want to bring up now? And I see that Mr. Bockenstedt and Mr. Shude and other members of the administration are on. And if, if anybody has any items they'd like to bring up, please go ahead. Shoot. I can't hear anything. I think I'm having an audio problem. Just one second.
I can hear you, Suzanne. Now I can't hear you. I can hear John's paper shuffle.
Mr. Rivera, she's asked you to take over.
Yeah, my apologies. I just came back in the room. I stepped out for a second. So I see that I'm being asked to take the helm. Can someone remind me what item we are on on the agenda?
Mr. Jones, Crystal.
Legislative priorities and budget items for.
Thank you. And Desiree, if you could share the agenda, that way I can just follow it off of that. That'd be great. So are there any legislative or budget priorities members would like to bring up at this time?
Crystal's in the queue.
Okay, Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you. Yeah, just a little confusion going on, but it happens, right? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I kind of want to go back to a bit of a general comment, I guess. You know, we just got the report about the shortfall in some of the revenues. We also got the report that we're basically on track where budgets are normal in terms of expenditures. And then Mr. Slivka made the comment that, that the municipality is in good shape. So I guess I kind of want somebody to just really put all that together for me and paint a little bit of a better picture, because I see the fact that there's a revenue shortfall and the fact that we have, you know, still have some unknowns. We're looking to approve some funding that we really don't have in terms of the emergency requests, emergency response requests. So, so anyway, so can somebody kind of put all of that into a broader statement about really the, the condition that we're in? And what really are the concerns? What do we not have to worry about? What should we really be watching out for? Anyway, I don't really know how to ask a good question on that, other than I, those are just a lot of phrases there that give me concern. Thanks.
Through the chair, this is Alex Slivka. I will answer them. I would say that, again, in line with the, I think it was AO 2020-99, where we initially moved the money, where you saw the extensive work that Municipal Attorney Kate Vogel and Chief of Staff Jason Backensted had done with the Treasury to affirm that movements of first responder payroll to CARES grants and then the subsequent ability to use those resources, tax resources that were freed up that would otherwise have been spent on first responder payroll for other projects. And looking at what the Assembly has approved in terms of the roughly $23 million in terms of the revenue shortfall, which is almost exactly in line with where we are ending. Right now, it's, Treasury is projecting a revenue shortfall of $22.2 million. So that revenue shortfall has been kind of stable. It started around that level. It moved up to about $25 million. Now it's back down to $22 million. So from a, from a revenue standpoint, we expect that through utilizing Treasury guidance to move first responder expenses to the CARES grants, our revenues and expenditures for the budget should be in balance. And so just at, at that level, we don't anticipate any budget level, any issues for 2020. I would defer to Lance, maybe to talk about, you know, what was contained in the 2021 budget. But that's where I state that the actual, the position of the municipality, that we are in good shape. We understand what our expectations are for revenue. And, and, you know, as Lance has communicated, what our expectations are for expenditures. So, but happy to give you some more detail if I missed some of what you were asking for.
Well, thank you, Mr. Slivka. Now that, you know, that, that does help kind of summarize it, I guess. And I, and I really was looking for more reassurance that the idea that we're really short on revenues isn't really quite the dramatic picture that, that I'm kind of getting in my head. But certainly, I understand that because we've used the CARES Act the way we did, we created a fund balance that basically allows us to compensate for that reduction or that loss. So, so anyway, so I, yes, I understand and I appreciate, you know, putting it in those terms. That, that does help. So, and I don't know if Mr. Wilber has any more comments, but, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Thank you, Mr. Slivka. I'm actually going to move us on the, we only have a couple of minutes left, and I want to make sure we save some time for audience participation. So would any member of the public like to participate?
Hello?
Go ahead, Mr. Haberman. The floor is yours, Mr. Haberman. Mr. Haberman, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So it was one reference made about on the agenda to, next Tuesday, in reference to the CARES Act money and, and transfers and stuff like that. I haven't taken a look at the agenda, but I would caution you that if you're going to be moving monies around, and please don't put those items on the consent agenda and create a situation where the public doesn't have a chance to address it. And, and it's been, that is my primary concern on that. And the last thing, just note, because I'm going to be very, very brief, is to remind you that on the initial and audience participation, you appear to be a situation of, particularly on the last, last part of the meeting, on final participation, where you didn't call anyone from telephonic and you restricted just people there. So the weather's going to be very bad Tuesday, unfortunately. So please note, people want to be heard and, and please use the telephonic. Thank you very much.
Thank you for participating. All right, with, with that, that will end our meeting. Thanks, everyone. This committee meeting is adjourned.